Next item is approval minutes March 22nd, 2007, and make a motion to approve.
Second.
On the question, or on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation, case number 07V2 Sultis, lot width variance 225 Dalewood. Petitioner and owner Timothy Sultis has filed an application requesting a reduction in required lot width in the R2 single-family resident district from the standard 80 feet to 50 feet, a reduction of 30 foot for the purpose of construction and use of a singing, single-family detached residence. This is pretty much in order in number that we have done where these legal not conforming lots, they, the 50-foot is in conjunction with most of the properties in the surrounding area. I see no problem with it, but anybody wishes to speak to the issues, Mr. Coles?
I would, I have a question. He's going from an 80 to 50-foot. What is he gonna do with your balance of the 30-foot? Don't say what he's gonna use it for.
80 is a requirement, Joe, he's only got 50-foot.
Oh, he's only got a 50-foot?
Right.
Oh, alright, okay. I got a, I misunderstood.
Yeah, under the zoning, 80 is required, but he's asking for the variance for the 30-foot.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Alderman, tell me.
My question is, because I, I just couldn't see for lot 50 and for lot 48, what is, what is the coverage on those? I couldn't even see it with my micros, you know, my microscope, so. Are they all 50 feet there? Okay, okay.
Alderman.
Thank you. I went past the property and I see that there is a garage on the property now, and is this where the house, are there two lots and right now there's a house next door and then where the garage is? Because I'm thinking the garage is gonna be removed and the house is gonna be put in, so the house next door will probably never have access to a garage. Is that correct?
The house next door does not, yes, would not have a garage at this point. The garage being that was there was on the lot to the north-
Right.
-of the property, so it's, it's nothing that's detrimental or an adverse effect to the property at this point.
Right, so that owner is selling it to some property-
Has already sold the lot, yes.
Okay, and then they probably know that they're not gonna have a garage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman.
Brings up an interesting point, where are they gonna, where are they gonna park their car? Do they, does the, does the driveway, is the driveway on their property? And then it, and I'm guessing, and then it kinda cut over, because I, I didn't see the property, so.
They were, the property to the south will have a driveway if it, they, if they need to install a driveway, they will install a driveway.
I mean, because we're not gonna allow them to park in front of the house?
Correct.
Okay, so there's enough area for them to get in back?
It appears.
That is correct. We're in agreement. We just had to double-check. That's a good question.
Okay.
Alderman.
So just to verify, we're talking apples and apples, that both houses, the one that the garage is getting torn down and a new one put in, it looks like it's gonna cover a majority of the width, and the existing white house next to it, both will be able to get into some kind of garage, even though I don't even believe one exists next door?
Alderman, we would have to actually do another inspection over there, it's been quite some time since I've been to that property. The existing house is on the lot to the south, and you're correct, this garage and driveway serves that house right now, once that's gone, unless they have a minimum of eight feet between the house and the property line, they would not be able to get a driveway through there to access the rear yard. So then, to answer Alderman Tellamy's question, what they would have to do is put a driveway in, and they would have to probably park in the front of the house.
Sir, are you the petitioner?
Yeah.
Would you like to speak to it, just go up to the podium there, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Dario Del Fiaco, I'm Tim Sultis' partner on the project. Tim is, was unable to make it this evening, he's currently on spring break and vacation in Florida. But in regards to the two lots, the lot to the south, I don't know what number lot that is, it says 49, I take it that's 48. There, we would accommodate them in regards to a driveway, you know, so that they would have additional, or they would have parking, so that they would not be parking on the, on the street.
Except, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that we can put just a concrete slab running between two houses all the way back with no green space in between, it just doesn't seem like that would, is there something that we would do? And then would we maximize our lot coverage to, and go over the allowable?
No, they would be held to the maximum allowable lot coverage standard for the R2 zoning district. It does appear from looking at this survey, that there should be plenty of room on the south side of that house-
Yes.
-between the south side of the house and the south property line, for them to put a driveway in. The house sort of rectangular and goes from front to back of the lot, so it doesn't take up the whole 50-foot lot width across the lot.
Okay.
Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Forrest, did you just get those now? Those plans?
This is the survey that I believe the petitioner submitted when Mr. Clicker began the proceedings for them to get the zoning variation.
So now, you just said that a couple minutes ago, that you would have to go back out and look at this site and see if the driveway could go in?
That was before I looked at the survey, yeah.
And we just got handed this tonight?
No, this is the survey.
He just brought it up now?
Alderman, more?
No, I'm not.
Alderman Tellamy?
Yeah, it brings up an interesting question, and they're asking for 30, 30-foot variation, but yet they're gonna be allowed to build to the R2 specs, okay? What would, what is the 50, the 50-foot, you know, what is that? What zoning is that? That's R, R4?
Yeah.
And what's the difference, well wait, what's the difference between R4 and R2?
The R2 allows a maximum lot coverage of 35 percent, period.
Okay.
The R4 zoning district will allow 35 percent coverage for the principal structure and the driveway, but then it will allow an additional 10 percent for detached accessory structures, such as a garage or a patio, something.
So which one is, so, so is this, is the-
Better than R2.
Yeah, the R2, okay, but in this case, though, the R2 is gonna actually be based on the 50-foot, so the 35 percent coverage is the 50-foot, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, then, okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
There's enough lot square footage for them to, you know, to have their 35-foot and make that, on the codes.
Alright, according to this diagram, it's got 5.7 inches on the side, on both sides, to the lot line, on where the house is, according to this diagram that you have, if that's 5.7, the other one has to be 5.7 too, then the driveway ain't gonna be wide enough.
Well, the five, they're proposing a 5.7-foot setback from the side property lines for the house.
Yeah.
The minimum setback required by the code is only five feet, so they are, they're gonna pull the house in a little bit more than the minimum required.
It's only seven inches.
Right, but this particular house, the driveway's gonna come through the front yard and then you'll load into a garage that's in front of the house, but it's behind the building line.
No, I don't mean this, I don't mean this house.
So the house to the south of it-
The house on the, on lot 48. They gotta also have five points, a five-point, so there's gotta be 10-foot-
Correct.
-easement in there.
Well, no, it-
Opening, and if they're gonna put a driveway right straight up alongside the property line, they ain't gonna have it.
There, the driveway for the property to the south would actually go along their south property line, not along the common property line with the lot seeking the variation.
Correct.
Okay, as long as you say it's...
Alderman Chocky?
Now, if they're gonna put a driveway in on the south side of that other property, why would you have to accommodate them? It would be on the other side of the lot.
Well, because the, originally this was, there, there was one owner with both lots, I mean, they are separate lots, and we purchased the lot-
Thank you.
-to the north.
Any further? Okay, then I'd make a motion to approve the petition's request for variance, reduce the lot width requirement from 80-foot to 50-foot for the proposed construction use of a single-family detached resident property commonly known as 225 Dalewood Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item is report and recommendation for the HVAC mechanical systems replacement at City Hall building. Mr. Forrest, I believe you would want to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, there is a memo attached to the revised agenda, are there any questions on that?
Alderman Suback?
How did we possibly figure out we needed a new HVAC system without having our needs assessment done?
This was just one of the areas, we still have to replace two more and several other mechanical works. We tried to repair this, we've invested thousands of dollars trying to repair it, and these were up and due. That type, those types of things, we, as you had suggested, can and will be done in-house.
And as far as, what are the age of these that we are replacing?
17 years, they're original with the, with the building.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
I have one question, and I understand they gotta be done, but my concern here is, and I discussed this with John, and then I'm gonna ask you this question again tonight, the budget's coming down, May 1st. Is this gonna be in because this was not a budget item for next year? Part of it was, but I wanna make sure, because according to the way I understand, when the May 1st comes along, all budgets go back to zero, and then a new budget kicks in. My question to you, are these units gonna be installed, or are we gonna go into next year's budget to pay for this?
No, Alderman, the, as I noted in the memo, we're gonna be breaking down the replacement of the units in two phases. One phase will be done under monies that are available now under this year's, the current 2006 budget, and that was money that was initially put in there for some structural repairs that we thought the building needed, with further investigation by structural engineers showed we did not need those, so we have the funds, and, you know, it's in the same, it would've come out of the same account, you know, for either project, and it became apparent over the last several months that the HVAC systems in the building are reaching the end of their lifespan, and so what we've done is we've chosen the five systems that are in the poorest condition right now to have those replaced. We did go out, we got, you know, contacted a couple of contractors, it noted in the memo, and I have spoken to Protech Mechanical, the equipment's available, and this would be completed prior to May 1st.
Thank you.
Any further? Alderman Chocky?
Is this going to require any inside work as well? I know we've had difficulty with some of the rooms, with the computer room, for instance, and so forth, will this be just the furnaces and the air conditioners, or will it include other work as well?
At this point, it will be the five furnaces that are in the poorest condition, and then four of the air conditioning compressors, and then, but along with them, doing the system, they will go through rebalance the systems.
And I thought I heard the manager say that this is one-third? No, you mentioned here in the, in the memo, it's about half of them, five of out of the nine?
Correct, it's half of the system.
So it's not one-third, it's a half?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be one more, this is half the job, we'll have one more bidding-
Correct.
-for the balance, thank you.
Any further? Okay, if not, I'd make a motion to accept the lowest bid by Protech Mechanical for $29,906 to replace five furnaces and four air conditioning compressors as part of Phase 1 of the City Hall maintenance program.
Second.
Second, not a question.
Not a question.
Is, is that a not to exceed?
Yeah, it's the bid, I'm assuming would be not to exceed, yes.
Okay, just, we should include that in the-
Pardon?
Just, would it be alright to include that language in the motion?
Sure, we could do that. Just add not to exceed, please. The secondor agree?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next item is items to be considered at future meetings, report on the One Wooddale Place Apartments, the RFP for zoning code rewrite and zoning map revisions, model ordinance requiring community antenna television system to obtain franchises, the B4 zoning district, and changes to the ZBA procedures. Any additional items anyone wishes? Alderman Wesley.
I'd like to add on about permits, reducing the bond issue on, on eliminating the bonds that we post for roofing and heating and air conditioning due to the fact that, I'd like to consider that because, simple reason, the paperwork, the procedures of going back and forth with the paperwork from the finance and the building department, I think we could eliminate that, because you're looking at $180 for a bond, $120 for a bond, and then all we do is hold the, put the money in the bank, then the finance department has to go and reissue the check, so I'd like to look at eliminating that in further discussion.
Okay. Anybody else, anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members are present? I make a motion to approve, minutes dated March 22nd, 2007.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation on the Police Pension Board presentation, status of Police Pension Fund. So with that, I will hand the floor over to our city manager, Frank Williams.
Okay, we have a group doing the presentation tonight, and I think we're going to start with Jordan Anderson, who's the president of the pension board.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you for letting us be here today. My name is Jordan Anderson, with the Wooddale Police Department. We're just gonna talk to you briefly about what the police pension is all about. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start off for an introduction and talk a little bit about who's on the board. We have Evelyn, who's a treasurer, everyone knows, she's gonna talk about the tax levy, and Greg Vesta, and he's gonna, he's going to finish out with the investments. But as everyone knows, the police department has a police pension, they're composed of two active members, the two active members are myself and Greg Vesta. One retired member is, is elected, his name is Dennis Kletzos, and we have the treasurer, of course, Evelyn Struck, and we have one mayor appointee, who's George Elvison. The, the board meets several times a year throughout, and we have scheduled meetings for the budget process, and we have special meetings for issues, such as new investments, new legislation, and issues related to police officers. As far as the contributions to the, to the pension, we contribute 9.91 percent of our salary every two weeks, along with that salary, we contribute 6.2 percent of our salary to Social Security. So altogether, we contribute over 16 percent of our salary to Social Security and to our pension fund. These comp, these funds, combined with, with the 9.91 percent, is collected from the tax levy, is invested by the board, and our board uses John Willhite of Oppenheimer Company as our financial advisor. Every year, we have to conduct an actuarial study. What the actuarial study does, it examines the, the current assets, the projected income, the salary increases, the timelines for retirement, and it also, we also look at the mortality rate for police officers. And when we get our actuarial back, we request a levy to, we request a levy, and that is presented to the finance, finance committee, or finance director, I'm sorry, and it's based on our actuarial numbers. Right now, I'm just gonna hand the, the microphone over to Evelyn Struck, she's gonna talk a little bit about the tax levy.
As Jordan said, that the tax levy request that is presented to the finance director is based on the actuarial study, and the actuarial study tells us how much is requested for one particular year, and the city then determines which amount they are, they can actually levy, and because of the tax cap, the difference has to be paid out as an expense from the, from the fund. And that's about it for the levy.
In regards to some of the levies, I wanted to talk a little bit about what the state projects as a levy we should be issuing to the city, and what our own actuarial determines that we should be giving to the city, asking for from the city. The state sends us a letter every year saying, this is how much you should ask for from your government, and in that letter, they actually send us, basically, they're saying their assumptions are based on all the funds in the state, not on each individual fund. And the next slide's gonna show you, if we went by just a general assumption of how the whole state is doing, we would cost, it would cost the city a whole lot more money than we actually do request. This is the last six years, gray numbers are what the Department of Insurance says that we should ask for a levy for, the red numbers are what our actuary, that looks at our officers, our retirees, our salary amounts, that's what they suggest. Over six years, you're looking at almost a million dollars worth of levy, that if we just followed what the state said, we'd be coming to you for that amount. And our investments, it's kinda where, those kinda get tricky too, because they restrict what we can invest in. While we would never go out and invest 100 percent in equities, they do restrict us at 55 percent in fixed income and 45 percent in equities. With all changing market conditions, this kinda restricts us from going anywhere outside of those lines, we're consistently rebalancing to stay within those guidelines from the state. As you'll see in some of our performance, when we have an international fund that's making 30 percent in a year, obviously our equities are gonna be stronger than our fixed incomes. That's why we're consistently rebalancing, as new money comes in, either through tax levy or officer contributions, we're pretty much forced to allocate that to fixed income, which, you know, in the last couple of years with the rise in interest rates, that's been extremely limited, because our bond rates are going down, so we've actually taken a decision as a board to actually invest in some CDs at local banks. That just shows our investments right now, 52 percent is in fixed income, 48 percent equities, we're within 3 percent of where we, where we should be. Like I said, we're consistently rebalancing, looking to come into that 55-45 ratio. I'm not gonna go through each fund, we provided everyone with a, our last month's treasurer's report, we're not gonna bore you with all the details, so feel free to look through it, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to review the performance of any fund, but you'll see, like Nations, that's one that's doing 30 percent last year, and it's already up four this year. That, you know, helps us out a great deal as a board by meeting our, helping us meet our goals. Last 10 years, we've averaged 7 percent returns, that's through the down years of 2001, 2002, when it was a particularly tough year for investing. This graph is our actual assets, this includes both our investment gains and also participants from the city and police officer contributions. Since 2001, the pension fund is actually up 59 percent, and right now, we're a little bit over 15 million. During this next fiscal year, we anticipate being over 16 million. The Illinois Municipal League put out a report in February that pretty much tried to paint a dire picture of police pension funds throughout the state. We looked at that fund, we had some, that report, we had some disagreements with it. For instance, in their, they actually used Wooddale as an example, and they said our funded ratio, basically how well we could pay off, how well we can fund what our liabilities are gonna be now and in the future, they said we were only at 69 percent. Again, they used the same funding formula that they used to say that the city should be contributing almost a million dollars more over those six years. Our actuary said, no, you're actually at 87 percent. So that's a significant difference, and many of the funds that were looked at in further depth after this report, it was found that they were anywhere from 10 to 20 percent, understated in their funding ratios, based on the Municipal League report. Our 87 percent is based on actual Wooddale numbers, like we talked about, and we were never asked for our actual actuarial reports. The IPPFA did issue a rebuttal this year, they outlined several errors, but-
Who is that, IPPFA?
Illinois Public Pension Fund Association.
Thank you.
And they emphasized the fact that there was a general funding, assumptions used for the whole state as opposed to for each individual agency, as we talked about before. And when the state law was passed in 93, to fund pension liabilities over a period of 40 years to 2033, they actually knew that funding levels were gonna go down for 12 years. Taking all that into consideration, Wooddale is still in the 80 percentile, over, over 80 percent, and, you know, we've had pretty good success over the last 12 years. And eventually, by 2033, all funds have to be 100 percent funded, that's of course, unless the state changes when that funding date is. The other thing that the IPPFA pointed out is funding level doesn't necessarily indicate the solvency of the fund, so it's a real general overview of that, if anyone wants to read that report, we'd be more than happy to make that available to you.
Alderman Suback, if you can interrupt, there's a question.
Yeah, what was the motivation behind the Illinois Municipal to run such a report? My understanding in talking with Chief Benowitz, or maybe Frank Williams now, was that, you know, there's a push now to have the state take over all of these funds, and so now, my perspective from Wooddale is, we're gonna get, you know, almost penalized for being 87 percent funded, and I'm not gonna pick on any town, but maybe Melrose Park, or whoever might be 60 percent funded right now, and now there's gonna be a push from those towns and those officers to say, state, you better bail us out, and then we're gonna get hit later. A, is that true, that that was the motivation, that the state is looking to combine all these, and if that is true, is it your board's job to start lobbying to make sure it doesn't happen, or do you need our assistance, where we can start, you know, I mean, because it's our board and passports that have, every year, everyone said that we have to fund the extra, we don't have to, we've made it a board policy to fund that extra, but we could've kept falling behind, so do we step up and hire lobbyists to go down to Springfield to make sure they don't do this, or whose job is that? There's two questions in there. Everybody wants to answer it.
If I might answer that, when I have a little bit of timely information with regards to that, I met with Senator Mildred tonight, from Carroll Stream.
Or Police Chief of Elmhurst, I believe?
That is correct.
And now, what is Elmhurst funded at?
Couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay.
Anyway, he talked with State, State Senator Kwame, who sponsored Senate Bill 1169, and that's been taken off the table, and that was a serious attempt to start moving in that direction. There was another Senate Bill 1166, which just has to deal with some international investments, that did pass this year. It's a continual effort to make sure that the fund managers, the pension funds that are in question, the downstate pension funds, monitor what's going- the downstate pension funds, monitor what's going on. Our presence with the IPPFA will ensure the fact that these, uh, these funds are being monitored, or these bills are being monitored, and we're doing it through that lobbying effort. Uh, we, we have several legislators. I also spoke with Senator Pankow this afternoon. Uh, she's been monitoring the situation, and like anything else, as long as we can make sure that we can talk to our legislators to keep, uh, to keep the, uh, the, the issue with how we feel about it in front of them. Doesn't guarantee everything a hundred percent, but once again, it, it at least gets us to the table so that our interests are represented. By no means do we wanna combine funds. Uh, we believe that there's, uh, there's something to be said about protecting what we've done and what the city's invested so far.
And my guess is, though, just as strong as the people that are funding enough are pushing, there's probably those towns or officers where they're not funding enough, where there, there's a push saying, please combine them, right? So it's gonna be, I guess, right now, if more to, if more towns are underfunded, it could be a, a...
There's obviously a tipping scale there, but once again, it's something that we have to continually battle for and, and make sure that, uh, our interests are represented, and that we continue to do the right thing for the right reasons. Continue to fund, make sure that we're, uh, we're looking at our fiduciary responsibility sincerely here, and, uh, not taking it for granted, uh, like a couple of other funds have had.
And who, that House bill you mentioned, who was the, uh, author of that House bill?
Eleven sixty-nine, and I hope I have the number correct. I know there's four, partly through, one other's, uh, State Senator Kwame, uh, out of the... And then eleven sixty-five was Senator Collins.
Okay.
And they're all out of Chicago.
Certainly, I, I mean, I think, 'cause this pension board has done a great job, and it'd be nice for them to send a letter to those representatives, saying, the information from the Illinois Municipal is wrong. Here's our actual studies, and we're doing quite fine the way it is. We'd prefer you not bring that bill back up.
It, it's quite interesting, and Greg, I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I had a conversation with a legislative aide at the IML, last name McCoy. And, uh, when I asked him exactly what the motivation and who authorized him to do this study, I couldn't get an answer. And, uh, you know, once again, I, I've talked with the mayor about this. Uh, he's brought this to the forefront with the Mayor's and Managers Association in DuPage County here. I've, uh, discussed this at the, uh, police chiefs level, at our executive board meetings for the DuPage Chiefs Association. And once again, all we can keep on doing is making sure that we, we keep this highlighted, do everything we can to keep everybody on task with this.
If I can supplement, um, a couple of years ago, the DuPage Chiefs and the Mayor's and Managers tried to form, uh, closer ties and work together on several issues. This is when the chief brought to our attention, uh, the Mayor's and Managers took a position of opposition. Uh, we also reached out to the sponsor of the bill and confirmed that he would not be moving the bill forward.
Along those same lines, too, we encourage not only...